I want to welcome you to the special call meeting of the Danville City Commission. Today's date is Thursday, the 29th of March, and we're scheduled to start at 5:30. And we have a very short, very brief agenda, just two items. The first one is that we're going to hear from the public, from our citizens, regarding any suggestions for the upcoming 2018-2019 budget. This is going to be a listening session. I want to remind my fellow commissioners that our task this afternoon is to listen. Then the second part of our agenda is that we're going to have a report given by our city manager about the National Citizen Survey results, review, and discussion. That will be done by Mr. Scott. And then, at the conclusion of that, we'll probably adjourn and get you home before the next major rainstorm hits our community. But seeing that there are so many of you who are present this afternoon, I'm going to set a limit. Those who approach the mic, take up to three minutes to make your presentations, and then return back to your seat and depend on how much time we have. If you want to go back up for a second time and you can get the chair to recognize you, we might afford you that opportunity. But we're going to start off by saying three minutes or less presentations, and it was an opportunity to hear from everyone. So with that said, the floor is now open to hear from the public.
Go on to the mic.
Yeah, I was saying, go to the mic. Yeah, Ms. Brown?
I'll go to the mic.
Thank you, ma'am.
Last year at this budget meeting, Mayor Perez said, "I haven't heard a single person come up to me and say, 'I looked at the budget, and I think we really ought to do X, Y, or Z.'" Now, I don't know why he would make a comment like that, simply because several people before last year's budget asked, you know, for various things and made several recommendations. There were several of us that talked about not hiring a historic preservationist, and yet somehow, we have, on the payroll, an historic preservationist. I have talked ad nauseam about not hiring consultants for everything that comes down the road. This commission has hired more consultants than any other commission before it, by far. And then I have also recommended in the past raising salaries of our regular employees. At the last city commission meeting, Mr. Scott said, "We are going to have to be mindful of priorities." I couldn't agree with him more. We have to be mindful of priorities. You inherited several projects, you've added a huge number of projects in your time on the commission, and you've mentioned putting more projects in front of the public. I have six recommendations. Number one is stop putting money into the city manager's position. That position is already highly competitive for a town our size. That position has a salary of $130,000 a year, and this is something that is seldom mentioned. The taxpayers put $54,000 a year into a retirement plan for the city manager's position. So on top of the $130,000, there's an additional $54,000 a year. My second recommendation is stop hiring nonessential personnel and start raising salaries for those people that we already have. We are not competitive, especially with our fire personnel and our police personnel. We train them, and they go to other counties simply because they can get better salaries there. My third recommendation is do not hire any more consultants to do your dirty work for you. Too often, you hire a consultant because you have an unpleasant decision you need to make, and you use the consultant to make that decision and present it to the public for you. Number four, do not add any more expenditures on the spur of the moment, the way you did with the TIF consultant. The city manager brought before you without being on the agenda or in your packets, asking you to spend immediately, approve immediately $20,000 for the TIF consultant, and you approved it on the spur. Number five, prioritize all of the necessities. We need a great many things. Those simply have to be prioritized and not decided on the moment. And then number six, and this is the most important thing, the city doesn't have any money. Every single penny you are spending is taxpayers' money, and you need to be mindful of that. This is not just a pot of money from heaven, it's a pot of money from the taxpayers. So that's my last recommendation, and probably the most important. I'm Wilma Brown. Thank you.
Next? Yes, sir. Mr. Graham?
I'm Randy Giff Graham, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to get up here and share our thoughts regarding the budget. I haven't studied the budget enough to break it down to make many recommendations. However, I do understand things about life that we're all smarter than any one of us and stronger than any one of us. And although it takes money to do things, I understand that most things are not money problems, but they're ideal problems. And I know there are some, I have some valid points about specific areas of the budget, but I'd like to take the time allotted to address one specific area that I believe affects the entire budget, and that is our dependency on consultants. It seems this community has a bad case of consultantitis. I know at times we need experts, but I agree in part with the definition that an expert is often just a little spurt who lives far away. And we've had a talent, we have a talented and educated community here, and it's an untapped resource, a brain trust that's lying dormant of experienced current and retired workers, knowledgeable in many fields. However, it's untapped because we bypass community, the ones who have lived here the longest and know this community best. Instead, spend thousands upon thousands of dollars on, quote, "experts" who live far away. Yeah, we can't know everything about everything. Expert times are needed, but shouldn't we first consider consulting with those locally who know a lot about some things and maybe a lot about one thing? How many hundreds of thousands, for example, could be free up if we could keep up a strong bond rating? As, we have a strong one now, but you understand what I mean by that. We paid $50,000, for example, on the parks and recreation. It could have helped do investment in Millennium Parks or other park areas, or even the Bunny Davis Center. It's just examples. I'm recommending we create reservoir community consultants by making a public request to garnish this talent in the community with a list of citizens who stand ready to advise the city and county governments, and go to them first. With such extra money, we can then afford to risk on such things as artificial ice skating rinks, and even possibly giving even more money to our economic development partnership. Because it's not a money problem, it's an ideal problem, and I believe it is fixable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, you have your hand up?
I would love to talk.
I thought you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
I'm Angela Allen, and I'm very frustrated with the fact that when I look at the way the budget is set, I look at the graph, which I really like, pardon me, I really like the graph that you have on your website, that shows income versus expenditures. What I don't like is that income looks like this, and expenditures looks like this, and it doesn't appear that that's going to change anytime soon. I would like to reflect what has been said before. The use of consultants in this community is ridiculous. It's to the point that no one here could probably survive a drinking game if we had to take a shot every time someone in one of these meetings said consultant. That's crazy. We have Boyle County citizens who are incredibly talented, and they need to be tapped. And you mentioned the ice skating rink. Now, I read the article, I did not attend that meeting, unfortunately, but I read the article in the comments that you weren't going to even look at that as a losing proposition until it had lost for three years. That's insane. It failed miserably, so you make it bigger? Why? That's not the way that we work in business. We would be under if we worked in business that way. I think that you need to remember that it isn't a gift from God or a gift from somebody else, it's a gift from us. And that gift comes with a responsibility, and the responsibility is to take care of what is basic and required. And let's quit with the circuses and the bread. Let's do what matters. Let's fix the potholes. Let's make the streetlights work. You have a responsibility to do basic things, and basic things are not what's happening in this community right now. That's all.
I asked Ms. Peak if she was taking notes, because I was having a hard time giving the speakers my due attention and, at the same time, trying to take notes. So I'll still attempt to take some notes, but I'll rely on the notes from the city clerk. Who's next?
Thank you, sir. A gentleman named Steve Knight. I'd like to reiterate some points that's been made about the consultants. Enough with the consultants. Stop with hiring outside people to come into the community when Mr. Graham's absolutely right. We have the expertise right here. We don't need to constantly be going outside wasting massive amounts of taxpayers' dollars on consultants. Stop with it, it's embarrassing. It makes you all look like, why are you even here on the commission? Why don't we just let the city be run by consultants? We'll just let Mr. Scott just hire some consultants, come in and run everything. There's no point in you all even being up here. It's ridiculous. And another thing, but let's go to another issue there, not to let Mr. Scott off hook, because, you know, we're talking about this self-insured insurance plan that you all voted in in the last meeting, and with really no discussion whatsoever until the, until Mr. Scott said, "Well, the consultants are here, maybe they'd like to say a few words," and then you all finally got around to asking a few questions. Are you kidding me? And then the comment was made by Mr. Scott that Barstown's been using a self-insured plan since 1999 and has seen no increase in its health insurance costs since that time? What fantasy land you all think we're living in? Are you kidding me? No healthcare increase in their costs since 1999? That is just a flat-out falsehood. Give me a break. Whoever that information came from either lied, or it was lied to this body, that Barstown hasn't had any healthcare costs increase since 1999? That is the most ridiculous thing I think I've ever heard put forth in this commission. And the fact that you all didn't even challenge it in any way, didn't ask a single question about it, is unconscionable. So start doing your jobs.
Well, let's close out the, here to the public section. I asked for next three times, and that's one of my old site-based counsel strategies. But I want to thank you all for your attendance tonight and for your input, and all I can say is that the commission heard you tonight, and we will take all of your suggestions and your thoughts under consideration as we proceed through this budget process. Commissioner Collin, you want to make a statement before we go on? Or ask a question?
Well, I was just going to thank Mr. Drake for this list. It's pretty comprehensive, it looks like, and that's the information we need, and I appreciate you putting it together. I may have questions about it as I study it, but I just wanted to thank you for going to the trouble of getting it together and...
Commissioner Collin, I'll go through the archives. That list was presented in April of 2014.
In the big book.
And $140,000 that I alluded to, that was kind of an error, because I thought $140,000 per year for the next five years.
At that time, in 14?
If you had those numbers up, it comes up on the tab. There were three items in there that didn't even have cost estimates.
Very good. Well, I'm glad you brought it back up, because I don't, I may have seen it, but I do not recall it. So I'm glad you brought it back.
It may have been in the large two, the large presentation you all did at that time? There were like two notebooks? This was contained in?
No, that would have been in 2016.
2016? Okay.
2014.
All right.
The two large notebooks was in November of 2016.
Okay.
That was another sign.
All right. So how would you say current needs weigh with these now? You have these plus some, I would assume?
Just the addition of those. We could address a few of those at a smaller level. You know, we addressed some concerns with the bathhouse. I think we did put some light bulbs in, not new fixtures, but basically those things were, as Commissioner Terry had mentioned, things that have gone left undone. And of course, you got to remember, 2014, we were 17 years into the building.
Right.
In 2014. And that was actually presented at the pledge meeting, as notified in the minutes that I included on the backside of that.
So I guess I want to make sure that we have the all-in amount and lists that you need, that you want us to consider? I mean, is that...
If that's the direction that this commission's going to go in refurbishing the current facility, then those items need to be addressed.
Okay.
If there's another direction, then clearly we don't need to spend the $750,000 to do those.
Right. And I guess that's why we need the information to know which is the correct route to go. Okay. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a presentation by our city manager, Mr. Ron Scott, the National Citizen Survey results.
Tonight, I thought it would be productive and interesting if we reviewed the results of our second National Citizen Survey that was conducted by the National Research Center. This standardized survey is one that's endorsed by both the National League of Cities and the International City Management Association. It's the only national survey, or the only survey endorsed by both organizations. It's been taken by hundreds of communities over many years, and it gives the opportunity for citizens to express their collective views on services, on issues of importance to the community. And it gives us this chance, as we have now, as we're now taking a second survey in 2018, to compare it with really the results that we had in 2015. This is a standardized survey. It compares to the national benchmarks of those, some 500 cities, and it, in retrospect, I could have requested of the National Research Center to just compare us with cities of the South or cities of a certain size, but instead, most cities can just throw their results against what's done nationally. So our results are being compared with cities over a million population, down to some smaller than us throughout the United States. So just bear that in mind. All cities have different capacities, different needs, and different results, but this is the so-called national benchmark that's the result of all of those standardized surveys being taken. Our particular survey, just to note on demographics first, the question is, who responded to the survey? And we ought to be mindful of that as we consider what is said. And it's interesting to me, now, the national survey is geared for cities, it's not geared for counties, so there's no distinction in the standardized question, do you live in the city or the county? This is also a web-based survey, and not like the more traditional mailed survey that we did in 2015, where we selected about randomly, or the consultants did, we didn't select them. The consultants selected randomly those 1,200 recipients, and we had a mailed-in response. And that survey was deemed to be a statistically valid survey, which is a mathematical computation based upon the rate of return from a representative set of people. So this one is a web-based survey. We had a total of 521 responses, which is an excellent response. We have some demographics that I want to continue to go into just a moment, but it's a different survey methodology. So as we have some differences in results, they have said that, to some extent, possibly the differences in results would be due to the differences in methodologies of the surveys. The period of the survey was from December 6 through January, December 6, 2017, through January 31 of 2018. As I mentioned, it was web-based. The margin of error on any of these numbers that we're going to be representing is said to be in the range of 6%. So a number could be higher or lower based upon the calculations they use in producing the report. We talk about benchmarks of how we compare locally with other cities nationally. In order to have a change in a benchmark, the results would have been greater than, 8% or greater. In other words, if we had a number change of 8% or greater, we would move up or down on a benchmark. If we're less than 8% difference, we would have no change. So again, 521 responses. The question of who responded to the survey? First of all, the employment status, do they work or are they unemployed? 71% worked, 5% were unemployed, which is consistent with our general unemployment rate, and 24% were retired. So this survey represents both the working and the retired population in our area. We asked, how many years did the respondent live in Danville? And more than 20 years? 50% of the survey respondents lived in Danville for more than 20 years. 11 to 20 years, 17%. So 67% of our respondents have been around here for a while, 10 years or greater. And then 2 to 10 years, it was 25%, and less than 2 years, it was 8%. So again, I think a pretty decent spread of respondents through the, those that have lived here and those that have moved here. And the question was asked, do you rent or own your home, your principal home? 62% of the respondents were homeowners, 38% were renters. The question of sort of the demographics of, do you have children 17 or under living in your home? 66% said no. They had no one 17 or younger living in their home. 34% did. So again, a pretty good representation for both younger and somewhat older. Members in the household age 65% or older? Yes, or 26%? No, or 74%? So most of these respondents were not sure elderly, retired, of 65 or older, but rather those younger than 65. And the question of household total income before taxes in the current year? Less than $50,000? Total household income was 38% of those that responded. $50,000 to $100,000 was 35%. $100,000 or more was 26%. So again, a pretty good representation for most of the broad income demographics there, pretty even. In terms of racial composition of the response, 89% were white, 7% were black or African-American, and 7% were other. And the age demographics, as we strive to hear from all in our community of all ages, they were really evenly distributed throughout the age categories. For example, 75% or older were 4%, 18 to 24 were 5% on either end. Then you had a pretty much equal distribution in the other age categories. 25 to 34 were 18%, 35 to 44 were 15%, 45 to 54, 21%, 55 to 64, 21%, 65 to 74, 16%. So a pretty decent spread and representation from everyone of those 521 people that responded. And then just another question that was a standardized question, which is no surprise to us here either, regarding your primary cell phone or landline. 80% said their primary phone was a cell phone. Landline was 9%. 11% said it was both. But cell phones have become the predominant form of contact. Okay. So with that prelude, let's talk about our community livability report results here in Danville. And we will have to perhaps enlarge this just a bit as we go through this. The survey, again, is a standardized one, and it talks about capturing opinions of residents, what they call three pillars of community. Our community characteristics, our governance, which is city government, and participation of social engagement of the community. Those are the three pillars of a community. Again, the characteristics of a community, our governing structure, and the participation and involvement of the social capital in a community. And they measure across eight central facets of a community. Safety, mobility, natural environment, the built environment, the economy, recreation and wellness, education, and then enrichment, and community engagements. Again, they talk about 511, that's actually an error, it was 521, and the range of uncertainty around any percentage, or any reported response, again, is a 6% margin either way. So if we can move to the next slide, here's the quality of life in Danville. When you think of quality of life, everyone may have a different idea of what quality of life is, but the standardized survey is attempting to measure that as defined by those facets of community life. And we'll get down to the graphs below, but to cut to the chase, basically, safety and economy, or safety and economic conditions, were identified as the two highest areas of concern or priority of our 521 respondents. Those are similar in terms of the benchmarks of other cities nationally. We don't have greater concern or lesser concern, it's simply similar to those others. The other areas that are lower in terms of a positive response were mobility issues, and we'll be talking about by sidewalk or by transit, by bus, our built environment, which might be roads and streets, and recreation and wellness, as being areas that were below really what the response was generated in those other communities that took the survey. Okay. So let's go to the next slide, and let's go to the top again. Again, overall quality of community life, we talk about Danville being an excellent place to live, and that was borne out by our 2015 survey, and is again borne out by this survey. How the residents rate their overall quality of life is an indication, indicator of the overall health of the community. In our case, more than 8 in 10 respondents rated the city as an excellent or good place to live. These ratings in Danville were similar to those in other communities in the benchmark. In addition to rating the city as a place to live, respondents rated several aspects of community life, including a place to raise children, to retire, their neighborhood is a place to be in, to live in, the overall image and reputation of Danville, and its overall appearance. Again, roughly 8 in 10 residents gave positive reviews of their neighborhood as a place to live, Danville as a place to raise children, and the overall appearance of the city, while about 7 in 10 rated Danville's overall image and the city as a place to retire. All of these were similar to the national benchmark as they were in 2015. As we get into, deeper into, these community characteristics, and we will in a moment in terms of the slide, we rated individually over 40 different aspects of those community All of those, for the most part, were similar to the national benchmark. Except for, well, all of those were largely similar, were safety, the natural environment, education and enrichment, and community engagement. Our own ratings this year on most aspects of the economy, the built environment, and recreation and wellness tend to be lower than average. So that's a bit of a change. And again, some of these, in order to be a change in the benchmark, the respondents had to... had to generate a response that was eight percent up or down over what was a change in the national benchmark. So when compared to our earlier survey ratings this year for some aspects of the built environment and recreation and wellness, that's both recreation and wellness, declined over time. And we'll talk about that in a moment in terms of comparing two thousand and eighteen responses with two thousand and fifteen. Let's show the bottom half of that. Again, the positive, which is similar to those in other communities, our overall image, seventy-six percent. Neighborhood is a place to live, seventy-nine percent. Eighty-five is a place to raise children. Place to retire, seventy-one. And the overall appearance. And again, that's not really that different than in two thousand and fifteen. Let's go to the next slide, please, at the top. Now, this will take just a little bit of delving into, and let me go into this with some detail. I don't know if that is as good an enlargement as you might get out of that for people sitting in the back. Okay, that's better. You'll see three shades there. The darker shade at the top, that's seventy-four percent overall feeling of safety, seventy-four percent, safe in neighborhood, eighty-nine percent. The distinction between, again, the darker shade is, that's similar to the national benchmark. The lighter shade, safe in neighborhood, is a lower-than-national standard. Now, on this one particularly, because it was like maybe eighty-eight percent or something last year, it changed by one percentage point. And I questioned our survey people on the difference in whether that was really accurate. And they assured me that it was. In computing these feelings of, these expressions of positive or negative, they basically had the ratings of very good, or good, or average, or not so good, or don't know. And they threw out, in all of these responses, they throw out the don't-know response and convert the remaining responses into a hundred percent and rate those proportionally. And they were saying that, given the changes nationally in terms of feeling safe in neighborhoods, that while there was a minor change here, it did say that people really didn't feel as safe in neighborhoods here as it shows up in the benchmark elsewhere, even though it might reflect only a one percent difference in that benchmark. So again, to repeat, any number has a margin of six percent error. So that could very well have been, perhaps, a different outcome. The great news, safe downtown commercial area, ninety percent. That's our safety aspect. Mobility, overall ease of travel around town, eighty-one percent. Again, these are all similar. Paths and walking trails. We've got a fifty-one percent response on that as excellent or good, but that is, believe it or not, still less than what is the emerging trends nationally where people really want to have walking and trailways. The ease of walking, sixty-four percent. Travel by bicycle, fifty percent. Again, those are similar. Travel by public transportation, our Dantran bus or other public transportation, it's lower than the national benchmark. I recall last year, and we'll compare this again in a minute, I think last year it might have been about nineteen percent. And so again, that's showing a lower. Car is similar. Public parking is, has emerged as lower than the national in terms of being great or good. Traffic flow, again, is viewed as similar to national patterns. Our natural environment in terms of overall environment, cleanliness, air quality, those are all standard, all good, all standard with the national benchmarks. Overall built environment is consistent with what is felt is good or great in other communities. New development in Danville lags that national benchmark sum, and that's reflected in the thirty-five percent. Affordable quality housing, consistent with the benchmark. Housing options, we may not have as many options here as other communities feel they have. And the public places to gather and to celebrate community. This shows that really there is a belief that we don't have enough of those here in Danville. We've had a lot of conversation, for example, just to opine here, just a little bit about Whisker Park and the need for that. This shows really that the five hundred and twenty-one people that responded say we have less than those number of facilities that we need compared to the national benchmark. Fitness opportunities, it shows that we're within the national benchmark, seventy percent says we have good or excellent. Education and enrichment, we're a community of education, that's consistent with the national. Religious or spiritual events and activities up there, these are, again, consistent. They're not exceptional, but they're consistent with the national benchmark. And when the survey was taken, of course, in December, January, we had childcare and preschool, which was, again, consistent. And then... Okay, let me make sure. Okay. The overall, thank you. The overall, I didn't mean to do that. The overall economic health, forty-eight percent, which is viewed as lower than in other communities. Vibrant downtown and commercial area as a lower. Businesses and services as lower than the national benchmark. So let's go to the cost of living, similar nationally. Shopping opportunities, lower than nationally. Employment opportunities, even though thirty-one percent rated as excellent or good, that's still comparable to the responses nationally. Place to visit, sixty-five percent, excellent or good. Place to work, fifty-seven percent, excellent or good, similar to the national. So the other ones I've covered very briefly, and we'll come back to these two. I just want to show you that. Alex, if you could go all the way to the bottom and make sure we get all those. Okay, so we went through all of these social events in terms of community events and activities. You know, this surprises me frankly, because we have so many special events and activities here in Danville. But the response showing that only fifty percent felt that it was excellent or good indicates by this that we're lower than the national benchmark, where communities have a lot of social activities for people who live within them. Now, we're very neighborly, a small community, and that's consistent. Openness and acceptance, it says we're a little below par in terms of the national benchmark. And opportunities to participate in community matters, that's consistent. Opportunities to volunteer, that's consistent with other benchmarks. So those are the community characteristics. Let's go to the next slide at the top. Let's go to the, oh, I'm sorry. Go back to the other one at the bottom. I didn't catch that. So these are simply, again... Okay, this is what we'll get to when we go through the individual at the top. But go back to the top, please. Nope, not that. There we go, up to the top of that. Okay, so governance. With regard to how does the city government in Danville meet the needs and expectations of its residents? The overall quality of services provided by Danville, as well as the manner in which these services are provided, is a key component to how residents view their quality of life. About two-thirds of the residents gave excellent or good reviews to the overall quality of services provided by the city. About four in ten positively rated the services provided by the federal government. Both of these results are similar to the national benchmarks. Survey respondents also rated various aspects of Danville's leadership and governance. About two-thirds gave favorable rating to the customer service provided by the city, which was similar to the benchmark. About half the residents or less positively rated the remaining aspects of government performance, and these ratings were lower than those seen elsewhere. About half or less positively rated the remaining aspects of government. And so we got into, in the survey, evaluating over thirty individual services and amenities available in Danville. All service ratings were similar to or lower than the benchmark. Aspects of safety were evaluated positively by majority of residents, tended to be similar to the national average. Other aspects were rated lower than the benchmark, particularly within the facets of mobility, natural environment, built environment, and recreation and wellness. So most ratings of mobility trended down from two thousand and fifteen to eighteen. This could be in part change resulting from the survey method, or it just may be a direct trend. Let's go to the bottom of this page. Get the graph at the top there in a second. Okay, so again, the rating of the government services, fifty-four percent said good, fourteen percent said excellent, which is, what, sixty-eight percent? Twenty-four percent fair, nine percent poor. And then at the bottom, the lighter shades are, again, less than the benchmark. The darker shade are standard with the other benchmarks. Again, there's a margin of error of six percent in here, and you could flip either way possibly on that, but it shows that there is sort of a concern that they're not getting value of services for taxes paid. Overall direction, fifty percent, not maybe as welcoming as is perceived in other communities. Confidence in city government, acting in the best interest of Danville, being honest or treating our residents fairly. And those are just a shade below the national benchmarks. This time, they were not in two thousand and fifteen. Again, we've got five hundred and twenty-one respondents this time, and going back to that mailed survey that was statistically valid, I think we had maybe three hundred and fifty or so in that survey. So let's go to the next page. These are the individual responses in terms of all our measurements of our aspects of governance. Police, seventy-nine percent. Again, these are similar. Fire, ninety-three. As I recall from memory, these were about what they were last time. Ambulance EMS, crime prevention, fire prevention. Typically and traditionally in all communities, these services are valued high and rated high. So there's nothing of a surprise here. Animal control is less than benchmarks. This may be a memory or a belief or a, just an attitude or current reality of people's concerns stemming from our dog issues we had a year or two ago in terms of community endangerment from those before we passed the animal control measures that the county passed. Emergency preparedness, again, consistent. Terms of mobility, and here's where we get into some of those lower rankings, traffic enforcement is viewed as consistent with what other benchmarks. Street repair is low, twenty-six percent. Street cleaning, higher but still lower than the benchmarks nationally. Street lighting, we've had discussions about the need for improving that downtown and maybe elsewhere. Snow removal, sidewalk maintenance, traffic signal timing, and bus or transit center, all of these are viewed as lower than the national benchmark. Going on further down, Alex. Okay, so not skipping this. Garbage collection, you know, seventy-four percent of respondents said it's really below... Well, they're excellent or good of seventy-four percent, let me state it correctly, is lower than the excellent or good given to that service in other communities. Recycling is a higher number and standard. Yard waste pickup, drinking water, fifty-four percent. Again, lower. This one surprises me, given the investment and the upgrade in our water, but that's what it turned out to be anyway, in terms of lower than. Open space, less than, excellent or good than that measured in other communities. Natural areas preservation, we are consistent with the benchmark. Storm drainage were consistent. Sewer services are excellent or good, sixty-five percent are lower than the national benchmark response, and on and on. You know, utility billing. Now, we don't bill utilities, although we have water billing, and these are cities. So I guess water sewer, fifty-three percent is viewed as less favorable than those reflected in the national survey. Land use planning and zoning, down in the thirties. Code enforcement has been identified as a problem for a number of years. Cable television, also below the positive response received nationally. Economic development, thirty-eight percent. Again, somewhat lower than the national benchmark. Recreation and wellness, seventy-one percent. It's sort of surprising that seventy-one percent would give it an excellent or good, but it would still fall below a national benchmark. Recreation programs, fifty-eight. Recreation centers, fifty-four. Health services, fifty-five. Public libraries, again, an excellent rating, consistent with that in other communities. Special events, we have a lot of special events, and again, it seemingly is a rating below that in other communities. And again, I'll remind you, we're talking about communities from a million people over down to a small one, so it's not a city-by-city comparison. And it simply shows that the attitude is that we don't have as high, well, those rating at excellent or good, fifty-seven percent, are not as high as the benchmark, whatever that might have been, but presumably be, you know, some points higher. Public information, adequate or on par with other communities. I think this might be time for me to also just interject before we get to the public citizen participation. Questions arise as to, what do you do with this data? You know, you see these results, they may not be as good as anybody might want, or maybe as you had before. And the information related to me by the individuals conducting the survey essentially say that cities can't be excellent in all facets of community life. When we go to the trend comparison and you see if we're higher or lower, that's when the community, the organizations in the community and the city government ask themselves, is this a direction that we're comfortable with going? You know, if we're, for example, just hypothetically, if we're excellent in education and we want to continue to strive in that area, are we also good with putting all our resources or a majority of our resources in that direction versus reallocation to some other area? And it's, you know, it's the eternal question in terms of services, well, what do we need to address with the limited money that we have? So we might naturally all want to be, and I would want, us to rate excellent in all of these, and we mostly did in two thousand and fifteen. Either that survey was accurate or inaccurate, but it's not the case, you know, three years later. So it will generate conversation going forward as to what vision we have for our community, how do we want to, and how can we, not only envision a different outcome, but actually cooperatively work to try to change a direction that may be going the wrong way. And so this is simply an assessment at this time for us to think about and to consider. And we can begin that process in terms of next year's budget perhaps, under some aspects. But the question is broader than that, and it's much longer than that. If we're talking about trying to have a livable community, you know, what is our collective priority decisions for measuring that? How do we allocate resources to obtaining that? And those are the type of things that I think we will engage in going forward. So participation. And again, thank you all for coming here tonight, because this will show that in Danville we do have a much higher civic participation than in many other communities, regardless of size. And I think that's the strength of the community, to have people willing to devote their time and energy to work towards quality of life issues. So this slide talks about, you know, an engaged community utilizing their community assets. We are saving money, but we'll come back to that energy here in just a second. Well, in Kentucky at least, I don't know of another community that has more volunteers than Danville has. We have a robust committee system of volunteers who work in many different aspects of improving quality of life issues in Danville. And that participation, you know, does generate the sense of civic pride and a sense of belonging, a sense of engagement. And it goes a long way to dispelling distrust and antisocial behavior, I'll just say, in terms of whatever form that may take. So I think we've got a good record in terms of beginning this process, and the survey reflects that. Again, eight in ten residents who responded to this said they plan to be in the city for the five years or longer and would recommend the city of Danville. the city for the five years or longer and would recommend the city of Danville to someone who asked. Eighty percent's pretty good, and these are similar to what the results were in two thousand fifteen. The survey asked over thirty activities and behaviors for which respondents indicated how frequently they may have participated in these. They varied pretty widely across those different measurements. Some of them were going to church, for example, some of them were attending a, a city meeting, some of them were, we'll get to those, but the overall survey respondents in Danville participated in most activities rates similar, or in some cases, lower than other communities, but we also had some higher participation rates too. So... Let me regroup on this here. Levels of participation for several aspects of education and enrichment and community engagement were higher than those observed in other communities, and also higher than two thousand fifteen levels. However, higher participation rates may be partially reflective of the open-air, web-based sort of survey, so those that were engaged, participated maybe more so than those in that set that we've sent out and had a percentage reply. Again, sense of community, forty-seven good, fourteen percent excellent, that's fair, thirty percent poor, nine percent, so that's, that's good. Similar to national results. Let's go to the next slide, and these are the individual measurements. And these are, again, evaluation of the community individually. Not a victim of crime, ninety-two percent. Did not report a crime, seventy-nine percent. Similar to national benchmarks. Use publication or transportation instead of driving, that's lower. We don't have a, a real easy public transportation system. Walked or biked instead of driving, forty-three percent said they did it, and it was excellent or good, but again, that's lower than the trends in other cities. Natural environment were similar in terms of recycling, being energy efficient, conserving water. Built environment, did not observe a code violation, thirty-eight percent. That means you, you, you did observe a code violation, and that's a lower quality of environmental life than nationally. Not under housing cost stress, you know, seventy-eight percent, that's similar to the national benchmarks. Let's raise it up a little bit, Alex, thank you. Our local economy, purchase goods or services in Danville, ninety-eight percent. That's similar to the national benchmark, if you can believe it, even at that high level, ninety-eight percent, excellent, good. Economy will have a positive impact on income, thirty-three percent. That's a far different number, but that's, that's standard to the national benchmark. Here's a number that's interesting, and Mr. Lastier will know that, work in Danville, fifty-eight percent said that they work in Danville, which is a higher figure than those benchmarks in other communities nationally. Recreation and wellness, these are all standard response, standardized responses, or similar rather to the other benchmarks. They use the recreation center, visit a park, ate your fruits and vegetables, migrate or participated in vigorous physical activity, and good to excellent health, all similar to national. Here's our, these, these darker areas, again, are, are exceptional areas. Used Danville Public Library, seventy-five percent, higher than the national standard. Participating in religious or spiritual activity, sixty-eight percent, higher than national. Attended a city-sponsored event, seventy-three percent. That's higher than, than national benchmark. So, community engagement, and I guess a city-sponsored event could be a community arts center event, for example, or any number, it wouldn't necessarily be a city commission meeting, but a city-sponsored event. And I see many of you taking notes, and let me assure you, this will be on our webpage so you can have this in great detail beginning tomorrow. Community engagement, these are higher figures than nationally. We're active politically here in terms of campaigning for a cause or a candidate. We speak to our city officials, our elected officials. We volunteer here, higher, at higher rates than nationally. Participation in clubs is lower. Talked or visited with labor, with neighbors, even at ninety-three percent is, well, no, that's standard, that's, that's not the lighter shade, that's the standard, done a favor for a neighbor. All civic participation good. Attended a local public meeting, thirty-three percent, that's higher. Watched a local public meeting, read or watched local news, voted in local election, ninety-four percent. So, whoops, that was me, sorry. So, we had the opportunity, the very limited opportunity on our standardized surveys to ask one or two questions. Last year, we asked about the importance of sidewalks connecting neighborhoods to downtown, and as I recall, about seventy-nine percent said that was very important. The connectivity issue again was on this one, and very important, thirty-seven, essential twenty-nine percent, somewhat important twenty-seven, not important at all, seven percent, and that's, I think, similar to what we had last year, maybe it's similar. Going to the bottom part of the slide, and we've talked a lot locally about the fact that our Bunny Davis Pool is aged, it's over thirty years old, and we have a lot of repair costs to that, and a number of other surveys that we've done included this one. Half of the respondents, of these five hundred and twenty-one respondents viewed building a new outdoor family aquatic facility a high priority. One quarter felt this was a medium priority, another one quarter said it was not a priority. So, of all the respondents, twenty-three percent said it's not a priority. The other balance did, fifty, that's seventy-seven percent, building a new outdoor family aquatic, offering new recreation programs, again, an eighty-one percent saying it's high or medium priority. Building new walking or biking trails, sixty-eight percent, again, and park, you know, and when you remember our demographics, these are not necessarily the younger folks either. It's our retirees or older folks who are looking to be more active, as I interpret this at least, who want greater opportunity for engagement in parks and recreation activity. Building a new community recreation center, you've got seventy-one percent as a higher medium. Other park improvements, again, a large number. You're into, you know, only twenty-nine, thirty percent in all of these saying it's not a priority at the highest, except for building new athletic fields, where fifty-three percent said we've got enough athletic fields locally. So, let's go to the, to the other slide. So, this is just the recap of this real quickly. Most of the quality of life ratings have remained stable in Danville over time. Eight in ten residents gave positive reviews to neighborhoods. Eight, eight in ten plan to remain in the city for the next five years or would recommend Danville if someone asked. Safety is a positive aspect of the community and continues to be a priority. Most residents have not reported to crime or been a victim of crime in twelve months prior to the survey. However, the proportion of respondents who reported feeling very or somewhat safe in their neighborhood was lower than the national average, as was the rating for animal control. Mobility, we've talked about, it remains a focus. Six in ten thought it was essential or very important to have neighborhood sidewalks connecting to downtown, and the other strong response was recreation and wellness in the fact that residents tended to give lower-than-average ratings to most of those, or to many aspects of our, of our survey. Ratings were lower than the national benchmark for recreational opportunities. Available affordable health, affordable quality healthcare, preventive healthcare, mental healthcare and food, city parks, recreation centers, recreation programs, and health services. So, that's, that's quite a lot in terms of recreation wellness that are, they're, they're lower than the national benchmark. Evaluations of affordable quality healthcare and mental healthcare, overall health and wellness opportunities, and preventive healthcare services declined since, that's really two thousand fifteen instead of two thousand fourteen. And we've talked about, in looking at facilities and services, half of the respondents deemed building a new outdoor family aquatic facility a high priority. One quarter said it was a medium priority, and about another quarter said it was not. A high percentage, sixty-eight to eighty-one percent, said the other services and facilities that we just went over were higher medium priorities. So, this is a topic of conversation that I'm sure we will, as a community, engage in when we receive in maybe the next month or two, our final report on the master park planning, because our, our community clearly values those services and clearly believes that we're not up to what the respondents in other communities feel they're up, their, their level of service is in terms of excellent or good. So, is that the end of this slide? Okay. I don't know if it's really productive to continue this discussion further tonight. We do have, and if you want to, I'm happy to, and we could go into it for a bit perhaps, this is the comparison of this year with last year, and it might only take five minutes, but it might be useful to have a conversation on this very briefly. Can we enlarge that just a little bit, perhaps?
Mr. Scott, may I ask you one question real quick? You keep referring to your health from last year, but today it keeps showing two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen, the last survey is what I mean to say, excuse me. So, again, our community characteristics, overall quality of life, two thousand fifteen, seventy-six, two thousand eighteen, seventy-eight, two eighteen compared to fifteen, similar because there wasn't an eight percent spread, and so, comparison to the benchmarks in those years among all the cities nationally were similar. So, all of these things were similar, so I won't go into all the lows, and we may point out the differences instead. Safety, overall feeling of safety, two thousand fifteen, seventy, and we've actually improved in terms of safety, so, but it's still, because it was a dramatic number change, it's still rated as similar, right? Safe in neighborhoods, here's, here's what gets me, again, it was eighty-eight percent in two thousand fifteen, eighty-nine percent, actually an improvement. They say similar because it didn't go to an eight percent marginal difference, but the, similar to two thousand fifteen, but lower than two thousand eighteen because the national benchmark went up. So, if you understand that and can accept that. So, overall ease of travel, about the same. Paths and walking, let's just look at what's higher or lower for ease of, for importance of time here. Again, paths and walking trails, fifty-seven in two thousand fifteen, fifty-one now. Compared to the benchmark, we're falling a little bit behind in that, I'll just say that. Travel by public transportation, twenty-six last time, seventeen now, we're, we're kind of viewed as much lower than the national benchmark. Again, we're compared to cities with over a million population who may have a transit system, we don't, other than Bluegrass Transit, which is Medicaid response, travel. Public parking, fifty percent, forty-four percent, we're lower than the benchmark in terms of availability to public parking. Traffic flow, similar, let's see where it's lower, just for new development in Danville, lower than national. Housing options, lower, public places, lower. Overall economic health, fifty-nine percent last time, forty-eight percent this time, again, a lower than, than the benchmark. And again, the earlier slide reflecting that the priorities as the citizens viewed those was for dealing with economic issues and public safety issues. Shopping opportunities, unchanged, really at thirty-three percent, but we're lower than the national benchmark back in two thousand fifteen, and we're lower in two thousand eighteen. Employment opportunities, thirty-one percent, similar. Let's go to the next page. Place to visit, work, all similar. Again, we get into mental healthcare, preventive healthcare, healthcare generally, and food, we're lower in the favorable rankings on a lot of those. Recall again, our income distribution of those responding to the survey were pretty broad-based, but the, the view is lower. Similar on education, enrichment, culture, music. Last time on cultural, art, and musical activities, at seventy percent, we were, I thought, higher, and it does show higher than the benchmark there in the category there. We're similar now, others are catching up to, others are raising the bar in terms of cultural, art, and musical activities. Says we're lower in neighborless in, no, let's see. Opportunities to volunteer, similar. Opportunities to participate in community, similar. Openness and acceptance, a little bit lower than the national benchmarks. Neighborless, similarly. Social events and activities is the one that we're lower. Okay. Governments in general, let's page up just a little bit so we can see it a little better. I'm, I'm sorry, just raised the page up. Yeah. Okay. You can see we're similar in terms of services provided, we haven't changed those a lot. Value of services for taxes paid, similar. Overall direction, the ratings aren't as favorable in terms of vision or direction. Welcoming citizen involvement, slower. Confidence in city government is lower. Acting in the best interest of Danville is lower. Being honest is lower. Treating our residents fairly is lower. Services provided by the federal government, they're similar in rate rankings. Those are the changes, and again, sometimes these are very minor percentage changes from last time, but they all dropped, and again, comparing to the benchmark, we, we are not rated as high, highly as we were rated in two thousand fifteen. One might ask, if you have an inquiring mind, is this a, an opinion directly related to the services and the interaction locally, or is it part of a mindset that we have about government these days generally? And I would say it's possibly both. Let's turn the page, please. Let's see, maybe I can... That's it? Okay. Okay, and our, our facet of governments in terms of what we actually provide, safety, mobility, natural environment, built environment, recreation and wellness, community engagement, really, most things are, are similar. There's traffic, uh, street repair, I think, is one of the lower ones. Animal control is lower. Street repair is lower. Street lighting is lower. Snow removal is lower. Traffic signal timing is lower. Bus or transit is lower. Garbage collection is much lower, from eighty-five to seventy-four, and I don't know if that stems from frustration over actual service, which I suspect it does, or if it's getting so much better elsewhere, which it may be. Even recycling, eighty-one to seventy-two, is, is that, I'm having a hard, hard time going across here, similar. Now, here's the one that, that puzzles me, again, drinking water, fifty-six to fifty-four, similar, similar, lower. That may be reflecting of the increased cost of the drinking water and not the quality of the drinking water. I would say that... I would say that, that affected individual ratings on that. The water could not be, I think, any better than it, than it is, but the cost did go up to provide that water. What, what this brings to my mind also is the fact that the opinions of our residents, while we want to hear them, we may not be providing all the information that would be useful to them in making a, a informed decision. It may not change the outcome, it may. If we had, for example, information on what our water rates were here currently in Danville with those in all surrounding communities or counties, and we were the lowest or the next to the lowest, would that have changed that opinion or not? I don't know. But I, I think we don't have that information out in a readily consumable form, and so those communication challenges, you know, remain for governments. So just to conclude this, and I think we are just about done here in terms of comparing Utility billing, again, is lower. Code enforcement is lower. Cable television is lower. Economic development is lower. City parks is lower. Recreation programs are lower. Recreation centers lower. Health services lower. Special events lower. Public libraries are similar. Public information, similar. So there's a lot of opportunity for trying to improve in all of these, in the actual cost effectiveness of the delivery of the survey, in the identification of the priorities, and in the communication to the residents so that they perhaps better understand the issues involved in, in delivering those services. The survey was a, a roughly, about a $6,000 survey. It was a web-based survey, again, and that was about as inexpensive as we could do that. It's a very professional survey organization that's won numerous national awards in terms of the quality of their research. So I think this concludes, again, our sort of hearing from all of you tonight, as well as through the survey, hearing from the community at large. And I appreciate, as always, your, your suggestions, your comments, and Mr. Chair, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Atkins.
I just want to ask the commissioner if they have any questions about your presentation. Did you say yeah?
No, we were.
Oh, sidebar, okay. Well, again, thank you, Ron, for that presentation, that information. Any questions about what you just presented from the public?
Yes, ma'am.
I caught you.
Well, I didn't intend to say anything, but you know how it is. I did learn that, I think what Mr. Scott said was, if, because I'm a volunteer, I might not exhibit antisocial behavior. I hope he still thinks that when I get through here. First of all, we hired a consultant to do this, and I, I am not an anti-consultant person, although I guess it can be taken to extremes, but having sit in your shoes up there, I know there's some issues that are better, better discussed in the, a more benign environment when someone else from out of town is in charge, because we tend to be like families, we squabble among ourselves, and we need somebody to referee. So yes, that is a reason, and that, you may not like that that is a reason, but it is one, and sometimes it does work, so I appreciate that. I have a question about the size of the sampling of five hundred and twenty-one participants in a population of approximately eighteen thousand, that's less than three percent. If the survey cost, you said six thousand, I had the number seven thousand, that's what I thought it was, so if it were seven thousand, that means you paid thirteen dollars for each response. I was a responder, I appreciate the fact that you thought my response was worth thirteen dollars, but I wonder if, this is, I'm sorry, I'm pretty simple, that's so far in the weeds. If I had several days and a magnifying glass and a pencil, where I could make some calculations, I might get something out of that, but it's just too far in the weeds. And I wonder if there isn't a better way to take a sampling of what Danville stands for and what its citizens think, and you might get a better response. And I, I just, just sitting back there, I thought, what if we advertised for six months that we were going to do a Danville census? And we put together a group of volunteers to hit the ground, put your boots to the ground and go door to door, and ask people what they thought about this, until we got a big enough sampling that we would really know what Danville thought about this. I don't think that's impossible. I mean, when we run for office, we all get all, out there and get our boots on the ground, try to go to every door, so surely a whole group of people could, could cover pretty big territory. What is the acceptable response for a representative sample? What percentage is, is acceptable?
I don't have a accurate or technical answer to the web-based survey. When you have a identified mail survey, first-class mail survey, and there are mathematical computations that are made with regard to the response rate, and it's deemed to be either statistically valid or not statistically valid within a percentage margin of area, typically three to five percent or, or in that area.
Is statistically valid, three to five percent?
Well, I, I'd say it depends upon the actual computation of the set of your survey that you identify by random. I mean, you, you know, I would say, in order to do what you're wanting to do, you're really asking, what is the best method of doing that to have a valid result? And also, whether this means anything or not tonight, given the low survey numbers that were generated, even though it's almost twice of what was generated by the mailed survey in fifteen. Now, I, I don't know that, I, I, I think the, the National Citizen Survey folks said it was deemed to be an accurate response with regard to the fact that there could be a margin of error within six percent of any number given. So it's, it's deemed to be representative.
Six percent of the three percent.
No, forget the three percent. If, if you had a responding number that said, we think you've got adequate transportation, and that's fifty percent that said that, it could be fifty-six percent, or it could be forty-two percent, as being the actual number.
If we, if we did our own survey, and we had the stakeholders, let's, let's call them stakeholders, we all know who they are.
Yes.
Submit question. I mean, I'd like to see something like that happen, not, not immediately following this, we got to deal with this now, but you know, in a couple of years, three years, what if we did one here in town that we really could get our, we really did it ourselves, and really did it.
If I could just opine, possibly you could do that, you would have to have the guidance of someone, I would say at some place that has experience in designing surveys, to ask the questions appropriately without slanting the question or the response, and you would also have to have an identification of the neighborhoods or the individuals you were going to, unless you were trying to do everyone, but you can't.
Well, you would have to hit every neighborhood, you might not do every one, but you'd have to hit every neighborhood.
If you got the bulk of response, you'd get there, you know.
But part of doing this locally is doing the questions ourselves, because somebody from out of town doesn't really know what our issues are like we know them.
Well, I would say that this National Citizen Survey has been taken by hundreds of communities, and most of them take it every other year, and it, it identifies a lot of issues there, we might phrase it differently. And in earlier conversations, 2015, I raised questions in terms of the wording, and they basically said the questions are pretty well set, and to compare over time and from community to community, you can't change those questions. Now, you know, did we ask the right questions additionally? Maybe, maybe not.
This is like a standardized test.
It is, it is.
And, and Ms. Hamner, I want to thank you for your question, I'm going to go to the next question, because we're not going to beat the answer. You have a question, ma'am?
I do. With this particular survey, it took forever to take this thing.
Yes.
Did you get any information on how many people started taking it and then quit? And those people who did answer some of the questions, were those worked into these figures? Or did it negate all of them once they quit?
We had no involvement in the actual receipt of any of the surveys, other than the survey results at the end, it was completely third-party.
And you don't know how they calculated that, whether?
They, they did it in the standardized method in terms of.
So that the ones up front may have been answered twice or three times as often as the ones in the back?
There are detailed, there's the set of questions and a detailed set of responses from everyone who responded, and the number of responses, so you could go through line item by line item and see who responded to which.
They didn't tell you what your drop-off rate was?
Not in, they gave it specifically to me in terms of the individual questions, and who said excellent, who said fine or good, who said poor, who didn't respond.
Okay, so you don't know if a hundred people took it, and forty of them quit when they got to page twenty-seven?
I don't.
Okay.
But I had the, people comment that very thing to me, that it was just too long to, to finish, so I had the, I had similar questions about which.
I'm just curious if the ones that were up.
Right, like you said, did the, right, I understand what you're saying, and, and it's a good question, you know.
Yeah, and that, and that question comes to mind that if you didn't finish it, none of your answers were counted, that's a little possibility too.
Let me, let me respond more accurately on that. There are indications in the detailed responses that all people who entered the survey were heard, some of them didn't respond to some questions, but I think their survey was counted.
So that would mean that the ones in the front were weighted heavier than the ones in the back?
In terms of the actual.
More often.
Could be.
Could be, yeah, could be.
You had to, yeah, you would have to finish it and submit it, whether you answered all the questions or part of the questions, if you submitted it, then you probably got counted. You have a question, ma'am?
Um, I'm just wondering, and I, I don't know what I'm talking about, but that's never stopped before, so.
Stop, none of us, right.
And I just heard you were weighted. It seems to me there's a wealth of information.
Yeah, you want, ma'am, you want to go to the mic? I think he's trying to record, though, as well, I think he's trying to record.
Do you need my name too?
Yes, ma'am.
Donna Fairchild, and I'm not sure that I totally understand this, but I, in terms of what I'm talking about, but you have a lot of, a wealth of information, I think, here, it's a matter of how to use it. And I don't think you can do that on an individual basis, because we all have different priorities and things that we qualify in, in different rank order, and I'm wondering if the survey company itself, or someone from center, or somebody brighter than me, can do something to weight these issues. You know, some things are more important than the other, overall, in a community. You're all looking at me, I don't know what I'm talking about, right? So anyhow, I'm just wondering if there isn't a way that, rather than to not use that information, because we spent the money, and there is stuff to be gleaned from it, but there's got to be a way to use it effectively, and I know that you're all bright, hard-working people on the commission, but I quite frankly don't think you're the people to do it, because it's time-consuming, it's very, what's the word I'm looking for? Not judgmental, but it's not non, non-prejudiced or whatever, I, I can't think, tonight it's late. But I do think there's a way of doing that, please don't put this in the paper, but I do think there's a way of utilizing the information, and I think there's a way of weighting it so that it is, it is helpful and useful to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last question. Last question.
You have, you said it's one more question, last question?
Okay, comment or question?
Come on then, come on.
Since you have been to the mic already tonight.
Steve Hunter, so, since part of this was about the budget, I, it's a comment, but it, again, I, I find this very helpful, honestly, because several things, I'm interested in safety, mobility, built environment, and recreation, kind of all flowed together. And I've been studying quite a bit about greenways and walking trails and sidewalks, and I think it's very interesting on some of the things that were mentioned, and since it's budget season, it's more of a comment that I found in some of my research and just studying around the country, that viable, walkable communities have made that commitment to get away from three and four-foot sidewalks and go to five-foot sidewalk standards, force those issues into the subdivision regulations, so developers build tad bit wider sidewalks, and then communities some allocate resources on a fiscal year to make sidewalk commitments in areas that maybe need connectivity, maybe they're maintenance-related, but again, trying to make that jump from traditional three-foot sidewalks, it, it just starts to build into that trail wellness issue. You can build trails, or you can, funny enough, build a five-foot sidewalk and start to achieve the same objective somewhat with on-street bike lanes and stuff. So I thought that was interesting, and I guess I'm going to try to do my part in my documents to maybe move towards that, and I would encourage the city commission to, you know, think about sidewalks and trails, I seem to populate in about four of those categories there, in a sense. I very doubt those planning and zoning numbers, I don't know about that thirty-seven percent. Come on.
That's four you got here.
No, 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 that'll get lower a lot next year. I appreciate that, I, I think it is interesting, and I do value the ability to compare with other communities nationwide, I think that is really what that's about. That lower category is very telling, and it just zeros right into where we need to work harder, so I, I, I think it's an interesting document, thank you.
Mr. Knight?
Steve Knight, again, I'd just like to point out a couple of things, I think that right off the bat, the information that was given indicates that this survey in general is skewed unfortunately to the affluent in our community, because if you look at that information that was given, I think that the, the, the poorer folks in our community are not represented, not reflected in this survey really at all, and I think that's very unfortunate, and I think that also where it is web-based, and you could have people from outside the community participating in the survey that may not actually live here, and I want to point out an example, you were talking about the water, and given some reasons why you thought maybe the water was skewed, but think of it this way, what if you had a bunch of people in Parville, for example, that were upset about their rate increase, and they got on and logged in and took the survey, so it may not be reflective of quality of water rather than other issues, and it could be coming from outside of the community together, so I'm not sure how much faith and I put into the survey, especially when the, the, the poorer folks in our community are not represented here at all, so.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Ron. You asked one, charge you five dollars. But I'm going to wait on you, though, Rick. Call, call key lime.
We wrote a check, I mean, the city wrote a check to this company for $6,975, and you said $6,000, this is basically $7,000, so, which is it?
I was recalling from memory, and I think you said about $6,000.
It was, the check was for $6,975. I just looked at that, actually, thank you.
Okay. Want to comment? I said, I said, I said one more, and there's been three more, Rick. Don't tell, don't tell, don't tell the mayor, don't tell the mayor out loud that, right?
I was just going to make a comment that, you know, I assume it's obvious that, that consultants come from out of town because of the very reason we're concerned about, you know, family quarrels, as, as that goes about there. But as was brought up regarding the survey, you bring people out of town for a survey, they, they really may not know the community, and that's the whole point that I was making, why not have a, a list of, of consultants, community consultants, and that's why I was bringing that, first go to them and see what they may have. There's a way to, there's a way to work that, as much as privacy is concerned, everything like that, where, you know, it's not going to be in too much of the family quarrel, but at least get their opinion, then maybe before you decide to, to go out of town.
Thank you, sir. And again, I want to thank you all for your attendance and your participation. Commissioner, any last important comments? If not, like to entertain a motion for adjournment, oh, I'm sorry, entertain a motion for executive session. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
I want to thank you all for all your comments. I move.
Second.
All right.
All those in favor say aye, those opposed, thank you.